We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if you would, please rise. At this time, Councilmember Bryant will do the invocation.
Will you join me in prayer? Our heavenly Father, we just come to you and thank you for so many things that you've blessed us with. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our first responders. We thank you for our city personnel, our management group, just thanking all for all the things that they do for the spine of the city. We ask you, dear Lord, to guide and direct us, to help us make the decisions that will benefit the city and the people and the great people that make the city up. Guys, tonight, be with us in all we do. Christ name we pray. Amen.
At this time, Councilmember Gardner will lead us in the pledges.
My pledge to allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Okay, tonight, we have no proclamations, awards, or presentations. We do have two citizens to comment on. These are actually agenda items, so I will bring those all up at the same time. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under public hearing, we will open a public hearing to consider the allocations of the $798,675 in CDBG block grant funds, funds, and the $387,000 in unprogrammed CDBG funds. At this time, I will invite Marita Sandoval to come up to the podium.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we have before you the request to allocate the CDBG and home funds. As you indicated, we have $798,675 in CDBG funds and $387,002 in unprogrammed CDBG funds. There are certain caps that are in effect for the CDBG allocation. The public, our CD administration is capped at $159,735 and the public service cap is We, CD is doing requests for their program administration in the amount of $155,674. The CD staff is responsible for administering the CDBG and home programs. We ensure the funding is spent in accordance with HUD regulations and contract requirements. This request will provide funds in order to hire a program assistant to support the administration of the grant. And also, we're asking to cover one half of the salary and benefits for demolition inspector in order to release some of the funding that's allocated to demolition to actually go toward removing buildings. For the housing rehab program, we're asking for $500,000 for the reconstruction of homes and an initial $125,498 for soft costs associated with construction for a total of $625,498. This year, we have completed six reconstructed homes. We've done four modern repair projects. We have two homes that are currently waiting start dates, and we've also contracted, contracted the five additional homes. So we basically have the money spent if you actually allocate it to us. For demolition, I'm requesting $194,517. And that will take care of the other half of the demolition inspector's salary and benefits. It'll also provide operating costs and the cost of removal of unsafe structures in the community. To date, we've removed 26 unsafe residential structures, and we currently have a waiting list of approximately 90 structures that need to be removed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council?
What does it cost to tear a house down?
I'm sorry?
Basically, what does it cost to tear a house down?
You can, on a standard home, you're looking at between $6,000 and $7,000. Most of that is manual costs because our street department does the actual removal, and they just fill us with the cost, their actual cost for equipment and employees out.
So you could do, how many handles would you do?
We probably will be able to do, I'm asking you to do math off my head.
Oh, it's getting close, that's all right.
I'm sure we can do probably, I would say, 30.
30, do you have, how many on the list do?
We have 90. Our problem is why we don't ask more for demolition is because it falls under the national objective of moving someone in life, and we're limited on how much we can actually spend with that category because over 70, or 70% or more has to go toward the home loan benefit, which is where most of our other programs fall.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, other questions from council?
Compared to last year, are you asking for more or less than?
I'm asking for basic, well, I'm asking for more in program administration because I took a cut last year because I knew I wasn't going to be able to fill the position for the program assistant.
You took a cut, or your program?
I asked, I volunteered to cut. You guys.
Your salary, or?
No.
No, our program.
Man, what about education there?
I left my job, but I can't do the periphery, okay?
All right.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll be, do we have to do the parks? Go ahead, Steve, come on up.
Actually, the two applications that we have, one being for parking lot lighting at Woodson Park, and the other is for lighting at Salinas Park Basketball Court. Those two applicants are, applications are from the community and not from the parks or communities. Both of those were from the community.
Okay, any questions?
But the both parks look really good.
Thanks.
And, I mean, the lighting is going to make it a lot safer for little kids to be out there, and so, good job on that, Steve.
We've got a lot more trees and grass to plant, but it's good enough.
Any other questions? Okay.
Well, thanks.
Moving to Odessa Affordable Housing.
Hi, I'm Jill Miller on the executive director of Odessa Affordable Housing, and we are requesting $25,000 in CDBG funds this year for our emergency repair program. We have been doing this program since 2002. We've helped over 400 households with repairs that they need for their houses, and we use that program for elderly and disabled and single parent households to make repairs, such as ADA showers, toilets, ramps, plumbing, electrical, safety doors, windows, things that safety and sanitary needs. Most of the people that we assist are below 25% of their community income, and so, we typically spend around $2,000 to $3,000 for a household on those. During that program, we try to apply for other grants as well, but we come to you every year and ask for CDG money to continue this, but over a million dollars from the community in that program that we don't want to put down any of the needs that continues to grow in our housing.
Okay, any questions?
Did you have money left over in your budget last year?
For CDG, for the rehab program, we have some money that we could finish spending, but we'll spend.
How much is that?
That we currently have left. I think we're down to about $7,000 left.
About $7,000 left?
We have, we have three applications that we're currently reviewing, so we'll all get some of them. They actually are turning downs and people that need work in the parish to go out.
Mike, go ahead and bring that mic closer to you.
Your project looks good.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
The health force is what.
That was my, that was my other point. There's great out there.
Unfortunately, with all the hell damage that there is, I mean, we'll be able to maybe patch some things, but our roof is just way too expensive.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, under public facilities and improvement request, Greater Opportunities in the Permian Basin, Whitaker Head Start, is there anyone from here? Okay, Salvation Army? Oh, come on. Just come on. Oh, you want to speak? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Under the public service request, Family Promise.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Greg Morris. I am a grant writer and a former president of the board, Family Promise. I am a coordinator in Family Promise. I was involved in it from the very beginning, so it's something that is near and dear to my heart. What Family Promise does is it helps homeless families in our community. And it does this, they are screened, and if they are accepted, there has to be a child involved. And so, if they are accepted into our program through our network of churches, we provide them housing, and we provide them meals, and we provide for the other needs that they have so that while they're in our program, they can go out and save, secure jobs, and those jobs, the money they make can go to dealing with issues that they may have, as our case managers work with them, but it also, it goes into an account where they accumulate so that they can get into housing. And so, the idea is when they go through our program, to get them into sustainable housing, to get them at a place in their life where they can provide for housing for them and their, for them and their family. Let me tell you the impact that this might be. You might not think of it quite so much, but when you think about it, we have the maximum capacity, if we were up to capacity 100% of the time, we would be providing to the community of Odessa 5,110 night stay for individuals that are, find themselves in a homeless situation. We would be providing for our community here in Odessa, 10,220 family-style meals as we feed these individuals, that they would not have to pay for, that they would help participate in making or in serving, and they would, we would also provide opportunities for volunteer hours in excess of 15,000 to 16,000 volunteer hours, in which our community gets involved with dealing directly with the homeless situation, which gives us the benefit of two things. Number one, we help those homeless families, but number two, we help our community to see that people who are homeless are just like you and me, they are of value, and you can get involved in the simplest ways, from providing a meal to working at one of the host churches to working at our day center. And so, we have asked for an allocation of $10,000 this year. That would go for providing childcare for those that might need it, that are in our program, for providing just basic case management issues, those sort of things, and the rest of it's there in the application. But I would ask and appreciate your careful consideration that 10,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but it helps us and it will help our community provide better citizens, and a better citizen is a better community. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
How many churches are involved now?
We have 11 churches involved.
Are they the original 11, or have you added?
No, we've had added, we've had a few drop due to various things. We've got a couple right now that are in limbo because of the storm damage, you know, and they're having to get their area straightened back out before they can, they can house those. But we've had, off the top of my head, don't quote me on, I would say we've probably had about a 25% turnover from the original when we started eight years ago. And we're constantly looking for new churches to come on board, so if you're a member of the churches that are interested, come see me out. Ian?
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
Last is Meals on Wheels.
The best one. Margaret Porter, Executive Director, Meals on Wheels, Odessa, 1314 East Fifth. I want to represent 10,000 and 063 people tonight because this is what you have provided meals for since October 1 through today. This is people that would not have had a meal probably without your help from last year's funding that we're in right now. These people live by themselves. I have 41 people that are 91 years old, and statistics tell us that we will be living into our 90s now because of our better health, you know, and as we creep up there, y'all be thinking about that. Yeah, do we? As if you don't have to think about it, you know. But anyway, we are asking for the $42,661, and this will provide 314 serving days for these people, as we do the weekday meal plus the weekend meals as well. You know, we do a safety check as well as give that meal out. Today, we did discover a deceased client, and probably that client would have laid there if my volunteer had not been there. Thankfully, it was a staff member that delivered that well. And we never know when our time's going to come, but at least this person did have a meal up until today. And also, with your help, we will continue serving the citizens of Odessa. You know, you only serve the city, but I do the whole county, and so, we do appreciate what you do a lot for us, and thank you.
Any questions?
Margaret, thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will move to the allocations. We'll start on this end, start with Mr. Bryant.
Well, first of all, I want to make sure that everyone understands it's a hard thing. You only got a certain amount of money to give out, and it does not reflect anything less to one organization than the other. As far as program administration, $155,674. Housing rehabilitation, $625,498. Odessa Parks Request, Salinas Park, $88,120. Woodson Park, $79,007. Odessa Affordable, zero. Greater Opportunities in the Permian Basin, zero. Salvation Army, zero. Family Promise, zero. Meals on Wheels, $42,861.
Okay, I guess it's my turn.
Councilmember Graham.
Again, I, I'm right with Dewey about this is, this is really hard. By the way, contact your senator and tell him we need more money for CDBG grants, okay? For our program administration, $155,674. For housing rehabilitation, $516,537. For demolition, $194,517. For the elderly and disabled, that's for the lawn mowing program, $20,000. For Salinas Park, $90,500. For Woodson Park, $80,000. For Odessa Affordable Housing, $25,000. For the Whitaker Head Start, $15,125. For the Salvation Army, $15,162. Okay, then, do you want us to do the next part, the?
Family Promise.
Home, oh wait, did I skip Family Promise?
Yeah, you had Family Promise and Meals on Wheels.
I did, I skipped that page. Sorry, Margaret will get me. Family Promise, $10,000. Meals on Wheels, $42,861. Then with the home program, for rehabilitation and reconstruction, $232,181. For community housing development, $33,119. And for the home program administration, $22,078.
Right there.
I'm sorry.
Can you do those two numbers again?
Which ones?
The 232, 181?
Yeah, 232, 181. The community housing, $33,119. And the home program administration, $22,078.
Okay, Councilmember Bryant, will you go ahead and do your home allocations?
It's 232, 181, $22,078, $33,190. I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner.
Okay, program administration, $155,674. Housing rehabilitation, $625,498. Elderly and disabled lawn mowing, zero. We'll skip down to Odessa Affordable Housing, $25,000. Greater Opportunity in the Permian Basin, Whitaker Head Start, $7,600. Salvation Army, $7,600. Family Promise, $5,000. Meals on Wheels, $42,861. And the balance put between Salinas Park and Woodson Park? I think it's 63...
63, 854.
I'm sorry?
Is it the 63, 854?
That's what's left, what's left at the balance, 63, 854. Yep.
Between the two?
Between the two.
Do you want to split and change it?
Yeah, go ahead and split it.
Now you got to use your calculator right.
Get your phone out.
Okay, now your home funds?
Probably, just put it up there just like you do.
Just. Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Don't feel bad, I can either.
That's about the $20,000 for the one one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That first one. I go. Hang on, tell me that one right there, the Meals.
$4,000.
Yeah. Good job. And the home funds.
Yeah.
$58,540. It's about that. It was left over.
Do we mean that it's in excess?
Yes.
Do you give to the other, say, the lawn mower?
Okay, that's only $20,000.
$38,000. There's one more.
There's, there's $5,000. You can give all to, where are the 20s?
Do, do the, where are the 20s? She didn't put it in.
Okay, you've still got $17,000.
We got to be at zero?
No, you don't have to.
Next one?
Okay. Next is Councilmember Hamilton.
I'm going to go ahead and just go across the board that all remains, as requested, we request them out.
Okay.
We still got a consensus?
Yeah, we still got a consensus. Yeah, just go ahead and what they requested. We have consensus anyway, but go ahead and allocate those. Doing good, I'm just glad it's not us. So we have consensus on the home funds? Can you blow that up just a little bit?
No, really. I'll just.
Okay, just looking to see what we have consensus on.
The consensus on CDG requests, we have, it's the two parks.
Okay, the two parks, we do not have consensus on. We have $90,588, $120, $31,31.
Where are we on the total money as far as, are we over on budget, or?
If you're blue, you're under.
If you're blue, you're under. No, no, what I'm talking about, if we go up to 90, you know, is that going to put us over budget?
Mr. Hamilton?
We need to go down to 31.
Thank you. If you fund everything, you're $88,000 over.
Yeah, so we got to.
Your current amounts are still $81,842.
So we can move down.
So we'll go to $98,500. I'll go to the $98,500 and then $80,000.
Okay, then that means probably we're going to have to cut down on the bottom, because if we go.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So we need to leave it at 31, then?
We can go up, we just can't.
We just can't go up all the way.
What do we have consensus on right now?
Just going down, we'll see.
We have consensus on Odessa Affordable Housing, on the two we have.
What about Family Promise?
Yes, you have consensus on Family Promise. The parks are the only thing we don't have consensus on. Everything else is fully funded.
So the only, only two we don't have consensus on at all?
Is our dollar in there? Yes, that we have consensus.
I can drop mine to 31.
You have $81,000.
We have $81,000 above.
So you can split it.
Yeah, I like that.
So you're basically going to have to split that 88, 660 between the two parks.
Between the two, that's good. I'm good with it.
So it'll be 44. So it'll be 44, 330, three park, and that'll get us to consensus. Mr. Morris, is that your phone? Okay.
Phone, what phone?
Let's see, but that'll put a 60, put a 6 or 5. So probably what we're going to have to do is make the allocation to each park, 44,000, I'm sorry, yeah, 44,030 to each park.
So we're over at the little one.
So that leaves $6,020.
It's over, so we can adjust that. Yeah, take it off the park. Drop it off a little more. That's it.
All right, everybody knows since I've got so much money left, I'm going to go ahead and find everybody out.
Okay, we can have a motion to approve both, the Home and the CDBG.
So moved, second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under ordinances, consider an ordinance to establish a reduced speed zone, school zone. Mr. Feldman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this agenda item is to create an additional reduced speed school zone. It will be for Zavala Elementary and front of the school on Clifford Street. The existing reduced speed zone on Clements will remain in place. So this is an additional zone. It's a typical setup where ECISD pays for the equipment, the city installs and maintains it. And that's what this agenda item is for.
Okay, are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hamilton, is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider authorizing Easy Rider Transit, Midland and Odessa Urban Transit District Working Capital Account. Mr. Hillbrand.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Glad you could be here.
Just go to the door.
Before you with a resolution to authorize a transit working capital fund between the two cities, Midland and Odessa, for the Easy Rider bus system, it's, would be 200,000 each city. City of Midland passed their ordinance today, or their resolution this morning at their city council meeting. And what it does, just interestingly enough, most of the bus system is, as you know, funded through federal monies, but they're funded through reimbursement, and reimbursement means either an 80/20 or a 50/50 manage. The, so, the bus system has to spend the money first, they're having a hard time with cash flow, and what this would do is set up a fund, set up an account, excuse me, where they would be able to pay their immediate bills, and then get reimbursed through the grants as they get them. So it wouldn't be really spending any money, it would be spending out, reimbursing it, spending out, reimbursing it over time. So that's a request for you tonight.
Any questions?
We're kind of counting procedures that we're putting in place to make sure that, I mean, what happens first...
They would have to make a request of the city. The city of Odessa is the grantee, the overall grantee for all the federal funds and state funds, so they would have to put together a request of us, so we'd know what they're requesting for and the amounts, and then, and what grant it's going to come from, and I mean, all those, we haven't developed the form, but that's what we'll do for them.
Okay, good job.
Okay, other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Have motion second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider adopting a 401A retirement plan for eligible city of Odessa employees. Mr. Morton.
Mayor, thank you. What you're being asked to consider at this point with the 401A, excuse me, may not need this at all, is basically, if an employee leaves the city, either through retirement, resignation, or foundation, if they have any unileash saved up, which is unileash, sick leave, vacation leave, this would allow them to put those funds into a 401A account, which is basically a retirement account, to protect it from taxes until which point they withdraw. But the benefit of the 401A, both for the employee and for the city, is neither would have to pay 7.65% for Social Security and Medicare on these funds. So that's net savings for both. We have many employees that have faithfully served the city, and as a result, they have some unileash saved up, and we'd like you guys to consider adopting this. To qualify, an employee must be with the city at least 10 years and have at least $2,000 of value from their unileash. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have motion second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
You abstain? Okay.
Thank you.
We have four to one, with one abstention. Next, underneath miscellaneous, Mr. Morton, did the city of Midland pass to go ahead and reduce the numbers on the MOUTD, or are they still staying with their three?
They did not consider the budget. They did approve the revolving fund today.
Okay, but as far as the Board?
No, I don't believe they've taken action on any of it.
Okay. Community Development Advisory Committee, Councilmember Graff and Councilmember Hamilton, are you all ready to have those voted on, or you want...
Not at this time.
Not this time?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, and yours is?
Marissa Salsito.
Marissa, okay. Put the, under Appointment of Officers, Building Board of Appeals, we still haven't found anybody, okay. Board of Survey, Councilmember Graff and Councilmember Gonzalez?
I'm not ready yet.
Okay.
I made an appointment, but we're going through the procedure right now.
Okay. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Councilmember Hamilton and Councilmember, not this time? Councilmember Graff, are you still working on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For under the Appointment of Boards, we'll have one appointment. Marissa Salsito will be put back on the Community Development Advisory Committee. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Was that everybody? All right, let me have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We have nothing for executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.